Record in progress.
All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, August twenty ninth. Like to call the meeting to order and if you please stand and join Father Jeremy Tupper for the invitation.
Loving God, we thank you for all the blessings you've given us. And we ask that you continue to guide each and every person in this room and throughout this county. To glorify you and how we treat one another. By not only caring for the roads and the various tasks that have been given to us, but especially by how we care for one another. In their lives and in what their various needs may be. Please continue to help us each and every day so that in all things we may glorify you. This we ask through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Father. You join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Public comments? Being none. A preamble of minutes. Did you have a chance to read the minutes from last week?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve as written.
Okay, I will second. Then moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes two to zero. Commissioner comments?
Commissioner Nolan. I don't think I have anything.
Okay. I also do not have anything this week. So, a new business before the board. Mark Silver has the.
There's a purchase order. The treasurer has renovation of their office. It will be paid out of. The treasurer's line item with the reserve fund. That's what we're asking. There's three invoices there. For total it was nine thousand something.
All right. I would look for a motion to. Approve the purchase order from the treasurer out of the reserve fund two fifty. And the amount of nine thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars eighty-eight cents. Forty-eight hundred of it is Seregan floor covering thirteen sixty-eight oh one to Amazon and thirty-four oh one eighty-seven to Gerber Electric.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All seconded. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes two to zero. All right, Joe, while you're here, do you want to go ahead and do your department update?
Sure.
We're running ahead of schedule.
We're working on the fall patching segments. And then we should have that ready for you guys to approve. Next Tuesday and get that sent out and hopefully it gets started about the first October. It's about when it start. I'm trying to make sure that. They'll keep one lane open. It's going to be during harvest. I know it's not going to be absolutely a fan of everyone's, but it's the only way we're going to get this done. I want you guys to be aware of that.
Okay, any chance that you can to alert the public ahead of time with a sign?
As soon as we get this. Worked out. We will post it everywhere. It's going to be countywide. And what I would like to do is start on the west part of the county and the reason being. When we get. Towards Ottawa Road. All right, we're going to do what we can with the finances we have. If we have extra, if I can find some extra, well, I don't want to use the word extra. If I can find some money to do a little bit more, I'm going to. If we start on the east side and go west and we skip spots. And people are not going to be very active about it. It'll be harder for them to understand. Am I making, am I making sense?
Sure.
Because I only have so much money to do this with.
That's right.
And if we can. And then by the time we get to the east side, if we're going over a little bit or whatever, I'll know where I'm at. So, but I know, we all know that Ottawa's going to be. An issue we're going to have to tackle the best we can. And if there's some places that we can get filled just to get us through. You know, until we can get everything done, we're going to try to do that. Any questions on that? The chip and seal. The year is almost accomplished. Should be the end of next week or or the first of the following week. And then when the painters get here, they'll be here to. Paint the roads. We're talking about applying for ball cost here and we'll need as many letters as we can get. And then we're going to want to meet with Gabe and we're going to set out and go over everything we need to do. And go over the information we got back from last time from K dot of things we need to try to accomplish that will help us. Something I've started doing. Is. Getting quotes like on Culver Projects. I tried to get three contractors, but it's been hard just getting two. And if it's under my spending allowance, then I go with the. Lower cost. Of the job. I'm wanting to send back where you started this to the person who did get it. The difference of the cost. And that it was given to someone else, not necessarily naming that other person, but letting them know. The cost differential. Between what their bid was and what the bid was that we went with. Do you guys have? Are you guys good with that? I think that's the way we should do it. And I did just send one out that we're probably going to have to do the work ourselves. I got two quotes from two different people. And it was more than I expected. If we may have to do that ourselves.
I've often thought that. Anytime that we take bids or anything, it ought to be. For sure, like acknowledgement, well, you weren't the winning bidder, but thank you for your bid. We appreciate your time. And effort and that type of stuff. That way it's acknowledged there.
Right. But these are actually just quotes.
Yes.
So it's a little bit different, but I'd like to do it the same way. We're doing the tires this way. But we're not necessarily getting back with, because we sent out to like six different. Places. And we haven't been sending that back because of the time issue. I don't know. If that's something you guys would like for us to try to do, we can. A lot of times we put the date, we need to have our quote back by. And some of them never make it, you know. But it's, it's just something we're trying to do to be. Maybe a little more transparent. I want people to know what's going on. And then, of course, anything that would be over. My spending limit would have to come to you guys. So that's just some of the things where I'm trying to do different. To make things better and then also. Let the local contractors know, hey, you're five hundred dollars higher than. The other guy was the same thing, or maybe you're three thousand dollars higher. So. And then I'm going to start probably putting in there. Because with recent ones that the material will pay for, you have to just take care of all. Because then we don't have to do the P E C. Or the tax and they don't have to pay the tax and it will just be charged to us and that helps too, because then they have to pay taxes on the rock or whatever they're buying.
Okay.
Okay, and then. We're just, everybody's mowing and we're working on roads right now while they're, you know, we're blaming. We've had, I had a complaint today. We used a retriever and we fixed some false ditches, but people don't necessarily like our windrows. So I responded to that right off the bat, but some of that is going to happen. So we need to be prepared. If you get some calls, let me know. And then. That's, that's pretty much it. If you guys got any questions for me, I'd be, we're going to have to answer them.
I.
Kind of think so right now.
I can't think of anything.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Running a little ahead of schedule, but everyone's here. So Louise Regenstein, September Hills Estate, flat one approved.
That's easy.
Yeah.
Since you're ahead of schedule, let me give you just a little bit of background information on this. So that you understand what it is that you're looking at and why you're looking at it. And, and say, and I know I've said a lot of this before. But the state grants cities and counties the right to do. A planning commission, a comprehensive plan and adopt zoning and subdivision regulations if they so choose. The city of Atchison has done that. I think they did their zoning back in nineteen sixty-four. They have had that a long time. Atchison County does not have that. Your first thought is that makes it really simple. Anybody who wants to subdivide in Atchison County can just do it. Well, that's not necessarily the case. Because in order for the register of deeds to take the deed. To take that plaque, it has to be authorized and signed by a county representative. And since you don't have any regulations, there's no path by which to do that. However, the state has said. That in counties where the city enacts zoning and subdivision regulation. And the county does not have any regulations. The area immediate around the city is called the extraterritorial zone. And if they include that area within their comprehensive plan. Then they can set a planning area that no greater than three miles. In which they control either subdivision or zoning or both. Within that extraterritorial zone. And there is a statute on the extraterritorial jurisdiction. The city of Atchison passed, actually they passed. Extraterritorial subdivision regulations many years ago. They also passed extraterritorial zoning regulations, but then those were. Done away with it. Okay? Because people complained about it. Things happen. I mean, it was subject to referendum and that occurred. Yeah.
Does that also extend around like Shannon, the, the extra, the outlaying part for the city?
No, it only applies to contiguous body of the city.
All right.
And so when you have outline areas, you don't get three miles around each of those.
Yeah.
But three miles is reaching very close to that. Now. Those extraterritorial jurisdiction rights give you. Give the city the right to require and the area that Louise is doing is within that extraterritorial jurisdiction. Anytime we get, and, and again, I'm licensed by the same group that licensed land surveyors and engineers. I can't violate the laws without putting myself in jeopardy. So anytime we get something within their jurisdiction, it is. Part of my ethical standards to say. To send that to the city and say, this is occurring in your territory. Do you wish to? Take action or do you wish to ignore it? If they tell me to ignore it, I go on and do whatever I'm going to do. And then it's in their court and they're the ones who are in trouble for it and not me. Now. Let me also tell you, and I'm going to give you just a little picture on surveys. You have three different classic classifications of surveys that I'm going to mention now. Nobody else is going to put them in these categories, but again. We have informational surveys which, which might be the property survey that's being done, or it might be. Construction surveyor and office survey, mortgage survey, appropriate location survey. Those are just informational, those don't have to be filed. Those are just for the owner's use. Then they have what are called plat of surveys. Plat of surveys. Don't contain the signature of the owner, but they create new land descriptions. And the state Kansas has empowered surveyors to create those new land descriptions. We require those anytime there's going to be a new description of property created. Those descriptions, those plat of surveys. Have to be surveyed. And the surveyor's professional conduct says. They must. File those with the register of deeds. Within ninety days of creating the survey or creating the description. Doesn't always make that timeframe. But at least it heads that direction. And if they don't do that, all I have to do is place a phone call to them. They will get it done. Because the state board. Has tremendous power over that, let's just say. To take what, take away their license order to put them on report. The third kind of survey that I'm going to talk about is a plat. And a plat actually does divisions of property. Now you would ask, well, why do you care? What's the difference between a plat and a non-plat plat of survey? Well, a plat must be signed by the owner. And it may contain dedications. If it's in the city, it's going to have to be signed by the city. Accepting its submission and any dedications to go with. If it's in the county. We don't have any regulations on our own, but if it's within that extraterritorial jurisdiction, the city's going to review it. But then the county must review and approve it also, so that you can either sign it or have Pat sign it and. Then the register of deeds can accept it and then it creates that new, that new structure of. Legal descriptions. Now, having said that, in this case, with this plat, there is a small dedication because. The right of way on two sixty-second road is shown as one width. Within theirs, they are showing the thirty foot. On their side of the section line where that right of way with, and therefore I would consider that a dedication. And the other thing is that she is restricting their access to the west side of the property, which means access off. Two sixty-second road is going to be coming just west of this tract of property. And they are looking at a future drive or roadside for that. Now. I hope that information made sense. Most recently, you did this with Elmview subdivision. And as you remember, the dedication brought you into a situation where you had to. Find out if the township would be willing to make the maintenance on those roads. And so you went through all of that. But again, I'm trying to lay the groundwork for why this is coming to you, even though you have a subdivision regulation. It's because it is within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. And it does have a dedication and it is outside the city limits, but within the county. Fair assessment?
In that this, as the city expands, because before the hospital was built. I wasn't in the city. It only went to two sixty-two. But after the hospital was built, when they extended the city limits. Then the property. Became in the city limits and, or within the three mile radius of the city. So if the, if the city expands anymore, that. I mean, i- if it goes like this, so does your three mile radius every time.
Well, actually. The extraterritorial jurisdiction just expands. When the comprehensive plan is updated and that. When defined area is enlarged.
Okay.
And that we just recently redefined, I mean, within the last eighteen months. The planning commission went through and redefined that extraterritorial jurisdiction. So, yes.
You guys have any questions?
So. Is there actually one plat that there's been question here today? I mean, one.
Did you get a copy of this?
I'm here, but I really without.
It's not, the copy we got. Image was, is not real good, but.
Okay. Louise has plans for a much larger. Future development in that area, but she has a buyer who wants to start by building something. Right there. And so she submitted a preliminary plat to the city who looked at it and. In-house approved that preliminary plat. So there is a preliminary plat that has, I don't know, what, twenty, twenty lots or something?
There, well, you can only do four. In there.
Without dedicating some product of some sort.
Yeah, without building things. And the likelihood of me doing that in my lifetime is probably a tad bit below zero.
Okay.
The. And, and there's water issues too. So. This is all, but you're right. If the whole thing could be set up as a subdivision, but I have no intention of doing that. You guys probably don't be in office by the time that, if that ever happens. But this is just one single plat.
This is what people have asked. It doesn't have to be called a J. What we know as September Hills.
Yeah, that it does indirectly, because it's all part of the same.
Sounds like.
It does from this.
The north, the entrance is on the north.
All right. The lot you're looking at does not, but I consider. And, and definition says. This lot and the remainder of the property becomes two parcels. And the other parcel, the remainder of the property does touch September Hills. But this lot is not immediately adjacent.
Do you want to show us? You can see on the bottom, there's a little square. And it shows, you're probably eager to look at this. There's a little square between where it is.
I'm going to come right along.
Sorry, that was more.
This is just west of seventy-three highway. On two sixty-second, that's right.
There. It's still going to be at the top of the hill.
No, this is still at the bottom of the hill. Isn't it? This isn't the top. It's still the bottom.
Two sixty-second.
From seventy-three.
On, on two sixty-second. This isn't going all the way to the top of the hill. This is still down in the lower area. It's in the platter area.
What, what are you talking about? Right here? This?
Yes.
That's at the top of the hill.
Oh, that is the top of the hill.
Yeah, by the square. Well, if you're going to have a, any type of drive off two sixty-second, it's going to.
It's got to have to be up to the top of the hill.
So the drive.
Because it will not be by Ashtone regulations.
Okay. So the drive to the west of this is at the top of the hill. No, that's not the drive to the west.
Oh, that's two sixty-two.
Pro driveway.
Yeah, it's hanging around there.
That's still coming off of two sixty-two. Can you show us about for that?
Like that there. There's already the drives there.
Yeah. The, the drive would be about right there where that drive is. The lot would be, isn't that right in there? Yeah.
You say that, will that suffice with your issue?
It's, it should. I mean, I'd have to go look, but that's a lot better being halfway down the hill on either side. It won't work.
Yeah.
Dangerous.
But if I know where it's at, I can go look at it and I can make sure that it's going to fit the bill before. Hope resume.
No, it's a survey area. He would not necessarily. But. It, it's simple enough because even if you approve this. You're still going to have to get a drive approval to get the drive in.
Yeah.
Well, not if there's a dedicated.
There is a dedicated road.
There's a driveway here.
Okay, two sixty-second road is already dedicated.
That's where they come in with the farm equipment. They move cattle out of here. Everything comes in right there.
So you're just selling two acres for one property owner. No road, just a.
Right.
Well, I will need to, I would like to go look at driveway and do my checking. I don't know what I mean. That's what I have to do with everybody else. To make sure it meets Ashtone. And it's, and it's, but I still want to. Make sure if we have to move the driveway one way just a little, because some of the existing driveways we have right now don't meet those regulations. Even though they've been existent for years. And when you go from a, with, on our road policy, when you go from a. Farming and you're upgrading it to a household or anything else, that we have to take that into consideration.
Essentially, to the city planning commission, she committed that the drive will not come straight off the. Off the north of the property, but it will enter from the west of this town.
Right.
That correct?
Yes. And that's going off the existing driveway right now.
Yeah, and if you want me to meet you up there.
Well, I, I think I know exactly where it's at.
Yeah.
But you can.
You got to have it up on top of that hill because of the traffic, like two sixty-two.
So I can go to the top of the hill. And set my cones out and do my driving and see. See where it's going to come out.
Okay.
So will this proposed drive? Be just for this property? Or will it be?
No, I'm keeping an easement on this because I got people farming out there. They got to look cattle out of there. So this is just going to be an easement drive. So it's going to come in here and then go into there.
Okay.
Okay, because I want to keep this open. The hankies wouldn't be very happy with me if they can't bring their cattle in.
Sure. I'm just trying to get it pictured in my head.
Yeah.
The only question I would have. Would be in future, if you start selling other lots off, you're still going to be using this one entrance? Or would that be something you would be putting more entrances in?
The way everything is set up, it comes in through here. I think there's an entrance at the bottom of the hill or a lot, but. That, I have to go through the entire process that I've just gone through, which is. First of all, talking to Roger to make sure I'm in compliance with everything. And then having a surveyor come out and design and set up everything and then go to. The planning commission to make sure it meets their criteria. Then to go to the city commission to make sure it meets their criteria. And then going to the county. Surveyor to get her approval and then coming to you guys because you're, that's the, that's the steps you have to take. So.
And if she does further development from that drive.
I have to go through the whole thing again.
She will have to be right in here with it again.
Okay, is this the first time I've been involved with it?
Right. You probably wouldn't have been involved in it until we get to this point.
Right.
Because of all that.
I understand.
If, if I get knocked out at one of the planning commission.
You don't get to this point.
I don't get to this.
Right. Okay, I will. I will go look at that today. So on that, like the drive and we look at it and we're approve it. That would be for this property and the ag use, but. Say in the future you have a lot more development go into there and the. Traffic count would go way up. I mean, it's, it's in the future when that's proposed to. To address future traffic.
Nothing has to do with that. This is all you've got on the table right now.
Okay.
And that's what I was meaning here. If, if I, those are all the steps. Because you're, you're the last step in the.
Okay, I've just, it's, you know, I was just wondering how that works.
That works.
You know, if, if you really knew that there was going to be a lot of traffic eventually, if that ought to be addressed. Now or, or not. So, and that's just me.
Well, from, normally from a preliminary standpoint, you would see a copy of the. Entire preliminary plat, what was going on. And then you would get a chance to say, okay, here's what we would like to see happen with this in the future. But generally, when you're doing a one lot out of it, you're not going to go with the full blown improvements and everything that would be there. What might have been more useful was to see an easement and the kind of. Dedication that might be associated with that easement, but for some reason it didn't get on this plat. Therefore, I just wanted to make sure that you know that is an entrance is coming into this property from the west and the drive will be the same. As that ag entrance is right now. Is that a fair statement?
Mm-hmm. But also from what we need to consider today is just granting her approval to plot out and sell two acres and then beyond that.
Correct.
She can go get approval or not. And then it's a, I mean, this is what we need to focus on is saying.
Good job. You developed two acres of the county. We approved this plat and then.
Your next steps are whether or not you can have a drive depend on that process.
Mm-hmm.
My.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's.
That's the same thing I was asking, you know.
When I did September Hills. I went before the county and I actually did all of this. With September Hills, even though it was not in the city limits at that point in time and I did not have to. But I felt I wanted to do everything correctly the first time. And so I went through the whole process and I think you were the city engineer or something at that point in time. You weren't, it, it was a long time ago. But we showed them the entire thing that we were going to do. But I do not want to. I don't want to start another subdivision. That's not my goal.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to approve the September Hills Estates plat one as presented by Louise Regenstein. Do I have a motion to approve?
Also move.
Okay, it's been moved. I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes two to zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if you want to come out and if we need to make any adjustments, just let me know.
Do we probably, would she need to fill out an entrance?
Just give me a call. We'll go out there, take a look at it.
Okay.
If you don't have a problem, you're going to be fine if you.
Yeah. Then that's how I kind of do it.
When, when, when her buyer does a development permit, which they would still have to do even with this. Then at that time. We will need to get a drive permit. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I'll, I can, I can run out there Saturday and I've got to know what I've got to do.
Okay.
So.
Just give me a call. We'll even meet you there.
Okay.
It costs their signature. And to be attested. I think that probably takes some special design and.
I think this takes. A.
It requires chairman. The two bottom signatures. The two bottom signatures there, what are they?
Yeah, it's Casey and Michelle.
Okay.
And you wanna take it with you to have Michelle?
And then you want me to go over the view?
Yeah, just follow her at me, cuz I think I still have.
Uh yeah, you know what?
It's just like not gonna show up for her.
Probably needs to.
Like a gel ink or something.
I don't know why they have to have these, those Mylar copies. That would be a good question for me to ask Michelle or somebody who Mylar.
Are you gonna have Caitlin take it? Okay, I'll just let it dry.
Just let it dry.
Yeah, cuz I'm afraid if I, it's. Thank you. Thank you. Just send it back over here, okay, and that way it drives it out of your way. Yeah, I'll roll it out later. Oh, yes.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Unfinished business. I know I've been asked about where we're at in real estate with Senior Village and different things. And we talked to Lindsay this morning, the administrator. Mister Henderson is our point of contact to set up the broker meeting, however, there's, he's still waiting on a couple pieces of information from our A D O N at Senior Village, which according to the administrator, they would get that to you to you hopefully tomorrow. But I just want it to be known because a lot of times like who's who's holding it up and and um we keep saying they're coming, but we're waiting on a couple pieces of information from um Senior Village um and the assistant director nursing is supposed to get that to Pat, so um hopefully next week or or just when we're ready, so. That's the only. Yeah, thank you for kind of riding hard on that. Do you have any other, um do you have updates today, Pat, or us? Do we have a need for executive session today at all?
I don't. Discussion. About property, whether we need to or not.
Are you talking about acquisition property? So we do an executive session for preliminary discussions concerning acquisition property or certain clients. Either with either, do you think there's enough?
I don't have anything.
Well, I wasn't here last week and I don't know what all was said.
Okay, uh ten minutes, ten minutes.
Fifteen. We got so much time anyway. Uh this would be attorney client fifteen minutes. I'll move that the board of county commissioners recessed to executive session at ten forty-four AM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which we be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship is allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion that the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the E O C one zero four four three U S Highway fifty-nine. Those present will be the two commissioners, uh county counselor, uh road and bridge and Mark.
Okay, I'll second, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye, passes two to zero. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Approval of the expenses.
I'll make a motion, we approve the expenses.
I was second, it moved it second in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass this two to zero. We want, did we wanna talk any budgetary, I know that I have people week after week, because right, I keep telling him, well, we haven't made a final decision, well, we haven't made a final decision, maybe next Tuesday and I know we're on a clear path, like we're on a path forward of their notice they got in the mail of thirty percent wasn't gonna fly with us, isn't flying with us, and we've reduced that. But just wondering um if we want to do a workshop again, or if we wanna share anything where everybody is of what we're doing, our thoughts.
I think we'll definitely have a workshop, and I think Alan Rebus is gonna be able to join us, I think.
Noon, right?
Twelve.
Okay.
So.
And then the hope, though, is to be able to leave today's meeting and provide the public with information.
Yes.
So that they have a week to digest it, come up with their questions and be able to show up at our hearing educated enough to ask us.
So with that, do we put like the preliminary sheet on the website, do we just put it on the county Facebook page, how do we let? People know?
I think it's important to let people know, and I like the spreadsheet format where they can see where the dollars are broke down. Cuz when you look at general number, like you don't know that, but when you see, okay, here's the appropriations, here's your your departments, like this is how much is being spent. That's good info, because then they can come and say, you know.
Is there, does that spreadsheet, could it have notes on uh off to the side? Just like when they see road and bridge, well, I don't know, but because of the, we put bond and interest in there and that that change, you know, I think there's some obvious things like that that could be explained. Uh it it might be better right off the bat than waiting for multitude of questions before we.
Yep, and um so I shared our initial spreadsheet and a gal said the same thing, like whoa, why is road and bridge like that, and so then when you explain it, they're like, okay, I understand, like it only actually increased four hundred versus one point two million or whatever it looks like.
You know, maybe an an asterisk and to have a page underneath if can't fit on that spreadsheet itself, but uh I think there's probably some bullet points that we could hit like that that would do a lot of the obvious questions if they bothered to read it, you know, and
Yeah. I think that's important.
We've got it.
I know.
Hour.
Eight minutes before Alan's available.
God. At some point, I wanna kinda go over with you just the rundown of the changes that's happened with the budget. Just kinda briefly tell you if I can be in the budget. Trying to capitalize on having Alan as much as possible.
Yeah.
Guys need the talk for if. From what we've talked about in the past.
Last week in our budget workshop, we talked a lot about putting what the reserve fund and using that money, and then we went around about that several ways, what have we?
So it looks like if you take all of the elected rollovers out of the reserves, it's about four hundred and sixty-six thousand.
That's all I'm comfortable with.
And then if you minus out the one expense, um that maybe I'll I'll bring up
Yeah.
About four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you move that over to general, that lowers the ad valorem taxes needed roughly about that four hundred thousand, give or take. Um so then that reduces your mill levy a little bit more.
Right.
So instead of seventeen percent ad valorem levied higher, we're now down to thirteen point six.
Okay, so right now, that's where we're at.
That's with N R P and all of that factor.
Okay, you know, when you do so many different scenarios, so they now do this scenario, and then it's like when you leave at the end of the day, it's like how did we leave that, was it, was that after this or was that after?
Well, and that's why I've been hesitant to give any feedback to constituents when they're asking, because there's so many pieces that are moving parts in this, that you're right, we walk out, you know, one meeting and we come back and it's like, okay, now, you know this is the number, and it wasn't exactly what we were expecting, but also I think for me is just being mindful of like the circumstance we were put in last year. Um because we approved our budget last year, September at fifty-one point nine 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 mils, okay, we are currently standing if we do what we discussed at the fifty-three point four nine three, so that's only one point four increase if we wouldn't have been faced with.
Keeping the R R.
Last year.
And
So like.
Huge inflation out there.
Right.
Cause anyone that knows that.
I think that the public, though, if we could have done what we needed to last year as we saw fit and weren't forced to back, go backwards. Uh the increases wouldn't be hurt feeling this.
No, it'll only be about eight and a half percent increase.
Yeah.
If we kept the fifty-one point nine 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 to what we have right now.
But we couldn't, I mean, let's be honest, like we couldn't, we couldn't do that because of the position we were in. But that's just, I still wanna keep that in mind, because the job we're doing. It it would, it would be fine if we weren't.
I had a question and now I'm trying to.
Sorry.
No, it would just.
Did you receive the email with the attachment of the current budgets and possible rollover from those?
Year to date, today, this year?
Yeah.
From you, when?
Um Friday. Remember, I said that there
Yeah.
It was maybe hard to estimate how much with a quarter left of the year, but you could go through each department and kinda see. So I know it's hard to know how much would be remaining a rollover to twenty-four to build back up that reserve. Knowing that if a department wasn't able to spend their budget due to an issue, they should come to the commission and say, you know, we wanted it for this, we budgeted this. It's gonna roll over, but I'd still like to use it, I don't want them to think that they need to just spend it all.
On on something else, yeah.
And that's been stated before.
So I know that we're going to have rollover, just it it happens, either we can't something didn't come in, or we couldn't get a project done due to a timeline or something, I just don't know how much that's gonna be. Ultimately, it will help for next year's budget, because whatever we rolled over from twenty-three, we'll go into twenty-four.
Well, I think that's one of the things I'm focused about of just like continuing to shave, to shave, to shave, to make the percentages look good and not be mindful of the position we took last year and why? Because we're only hurting ourselves and doing what's right last year put us in a bind to where I think it's almost better just to explain that than to hamstring ourselves to where next year we're doing the same thing, right, of like.
I think if last year would have happened and we wouldn't have had the inflation, I don't think that, you know, with what um salaries, wages have done and just everything, all commodities and everything. I don't think we would really felt the pinch too much, much, but the double whammy of operating on two-year-old budget numbers and the inflation and one of those two years we couldn't raise, so I mean, it's here, we're we're making up.
Do we do an executive session, attorney-client? I have a couple questions. Uh just ten minutes is fine with Pat and the financial director and commissioners.
See, with the attorney client?
Yes.
I'll move with the board of county commissioners recessed to executive session at eleven oh one AM for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. That's allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B two, and that the purpose of the closed session is to protect confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session in ten minutes in the E O C one zero four four three U S Highway fifty-nine, and those present will be two commissioners, Pat Henderson and Mark.
Hey, I'll second, then move it second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass this two to zero. It's been like forty-eight minutes before Alan is available. So what's your vision? One last budget workshop? And then come back into open session and summarize what our final is before next week, so people.
Yeah, and then if we don't have all of the details, and we talked about putting some footnotes and things like that. But then where they could find that information, how to access it, is that doable? I mean, today, but I mean, then, I don't know if when you would be able to post it with a footnote and things like that.
Whenever, I just don't know what platform you want it on, you want it on the website or just a Facebook page or.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yes, yes, yeah.
I mean, I, once we have it out there, the, I I would much rather.
Mary's on, but it'd be great if she heard us and put something out, I mean, I know people watch the blog too, I don't know if they would see it before next week, but at least it just lessens the the blow of thirty percent, cuz I have had a lot of feedback, like. How.
You can put stuff on the website, right? Who does stuff to the Facebook page? So I'm gonna say something. I think you should vote for it to be posted.
Okay.
Vote for it to be what?
Posted.
Oh.
We've never posted it before, preliminarily, historically, so I think if that's something we wanna do to cover everybody, let's
Good point, I think, yeah, that's a great idea, thank you for that. Good point. I think, yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we should wait for Alan to vote.
I agree.
Totally bug.
Where we go, we'll be in workshop then.
I know, but maybe he'll stay on for a bit when we get off, just to be present for the public. And we can work on his timeline too. Like, if he only has a half an hour, we'll get nitty-gritty until twenty minutes and get back into open session, and. I think it's, that's a great, I'm so happy you thought of that, cause that is a good point.
Yeah, since it's a departure from normal.
Uh-huh.
And I think it's, or thinking that, uh, at least mine, that since it is so off from what was published with the R and R. Publications that, I mean, there's just hu- huge disconnect there. If all of a sudden they come to a meeting saying thirty percent, and then it's not. Um.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Yeah. And they still may not like. The racist.
Right.
Is coming, but I mean, it, it, it's a, it's a big difference.
So then, do you think that if someone does have their. Pitchforks ready? Um. Then maybe we could talk about how to prevent that in the future, like next year's budget. Maybe we start the process earlier, we have the meetings done with departments by a certain time to know better.
You should share your thoughts too.
Well, cause we, we had the thirty percent in there, that was. You know, we have all the deadlines, right? We have to do it soon enough to get it to the paper and get it published and get the R and R notices out by the tenth of August, and. There's all these deadlines, so we're trying to hurry up and get it done to meet all those. Where we may not have our final number where we need it yet, but we have to have some number for the paper to go out. So do we start the whole process? In April?
I, I think we started, we're, we're starting so much earlier than we used to, but I think that we're gonna. Need to. Maybe take charge a little bit sooner is, uh, and I think we were trying to. As, as we review a budget, and it looks like, okay, they. That's, that looks really good. I think we're kind of. Have been given an assurance is like, okay, that looks good until we see the big picture.
Right.
And then it's like, so we started out basically. Is, and so I think that we need to hear all this information and not ha- pass. Uh, judgment or, or like assurances that that's gonna stand until. We get the big picture, cause when you see the whole thing together, it's like, this does not work, this does not compute. Things that you really wanted to see and, and thought were not. They weren't extravagant, they, they were. But at the end of the day, we had to make adjustments, big adjustments, and it couldn't happen, so we kind of hold off. And instead of doing basically three rounds, I mean, we've had some departments, three. And maybe even more talking, you know, on, on that, on that between times. About what we can do, and I think we can speed the process up quicker doing that too. So that's my vision of it.
Well, and I, I liked, you kind of shared that with us last week after the, the budget workshop, and I, I appreciate that too, because sometimes. I think each year we've gotten, we've gotten better. We're, we're, we're digging deeper, we know more, we are taking charge, like you said, we should. Which feels better, because historically, it was like, you listen. You might ask some questions, but then you go on to the next one, and it's like. At what point, like, we are spending based on constituent feedback, alright, so we have to sometimes make hard decisions of. Alright, we're over overall.
Mm-hmm.
This is more important to constituents than this, like, so we have to be the ones. Cutting or asking the hard questions. And like every department head should, they're going to bat for their department only, like, they're coming in with their, you know, here's my pie in the sky, this is what I need to operate. And unless we're questioning and telling them no. It's just gonna continue up, I mean. So I, I appreciate that comment, and I think that.
And, and not holding, or kind of holding back from the approval in the initial phase two is. Then when we come back and we discuss it amongst the commissioners, so then if there's concerns, because if, if two are, don't. Two commissioners just don't happen to see it, it's like, oh, this sounds great. The one commissioner that's got a question then is like, well, it's, there's, we haven't voted yet, but you're almost outvoted. You hate to be negative, negative, neg, and it may not be the same law in every time, but as you come back then during the process and you discuss each budget. Before we've given assurances, then it. It kind of gives everybody then a more of a chance to hear a little different perspective on a line item. That you might be reluctant to, to question and when everybody's here and everybody's agreement. Oh, I. No, they already said they liked it.
But also in the flip side of the person, the commissioner questioning it. Doesn't feel isolated like they're picking on anyone, it's just general questions of. Hey, this is, I just was curious versus like that internal time for commissioners to be like, hey, what do you think about this? And us be united on knowing how we're going into the process versus. Going into the process with three different minds that nobody's talked about, you know, and then if we. We keep saying, well, let's bring the department head back in, well, that's wasting everybody's time too.
Yeah.
Cause if they're, the department head gave us what they need, so bringing him back.
Right.
To reiterate that, like, we just have to figure it out on our own.
Yeah.
How we feel and what we think, and it is what it is. But, no, I. I appreciated those comments, cause I think. Each year we're getting better, but just continuing to. To be able to see perspective or, or hear, you know, your thoughts or questions, like. It's just good. It's just helpful.
Well, and last year was totally different. It's, it was completely different. We didn't have a choice. We had to stay with what the revenue we generated in twenty-two.
Yeah.
So it was just a cut to whatever to get down to that bank. Now. It's, we are able to exceed the R and R. So now it's a harder. Scenario.
Yeah, you're able to, I guess. We could at thirty percent, but.
You have.
Uh, you know, that's, that's still not an option, thank goodness.
Yeah.
Uh. Also part of this. Budget process, the revenues are down too, didn't we say that?
Yeah.
Motor vehicles down a hundred thousand.
Yes.
Which, that's half a mil, almost a half a mil. Um. I think that caught a lot of people by surprise.
And I don't have an answer as to why it's down, that's just the estimates we were providing.
I just wondered if there's maybe fewer new vehicles with being sold, that's, that's the big chunk, cause that's the big taxes, but new vehicles, and there's been. Fewer of them available, you know, maybe there's. Right. Been more used, which is cheaper. Um. Well, are we going? How are we gonna stay in session until Alan's here?
Oh, so with him, then he'll, for, since his workshop, will it be a breakout for him, since he's joining via Zoom? Or how does that work? Sorry, Kaylee, I didn't even think about how we're gonna.
Let me text him and see if he was planning to join Zoom or just phone call.
Oh, okay, cause maybe he was just gonna.
Yeah, that wasn't clear to me. I don't know.
Yeah, I never thought of that either.
And if we are going to adjourn into a workshop. That would be okay to do a breakout with him if he wants to be or not?
I think that's, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I mean, it's gonna be recessed, so. I'm just trying to get. I know. Attention on terms, cause you always say adjourn. I know, sorry. But adjournments not so one. Yeah. Right, okay.
Yeah. Second is.
Recession. Cause if you're not gonna adjourn the actual meeting until one. Yeah. Cause it's the future of public. Yep. Then that would be the adjourn.
Give us some point.
Yeah. So I guess since we really don't, I mean, we could recess, but I'm curious, I don't know how the breakout's. Were they still around hinting? And then I would make a breakout room. Okay, so we need to just stay clear until we know one way or another for Alan. Right, because even if it is, um. I will just stop every. Like, you know, I'm like, you for recess. Okay. I'm gonna try to.
Um. Will we? This Commander One from Westlander, was that supposed to be today?
No.
I'm not seeing the date on.
It passed the agenda deadline, so I think it's next week. I think I put it on for next week.
It's on for, okay.
Yeah, although, but yeah, it was since he sent it after the deadline, and I think that's what he meant to. Was for the following week.
Okay, well, I just, I couldn't see a date there, and I saw the P O, so. I wanted to make sure that that's something that we.
Yeah, I put it on for next week, and that's, I told him that I had put it on. For Tuesday, September fifth. And then the meeting time was in the afternoon versus the morning.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Um, there's. I think after we get the budget done. Next week, and then maybe the week after, or whenever you guys want to, um. There's that. Preparation policy that you guys wanted to review at some point.
Hmm.
And then. There's another thing I wanted to. Bring your attention to is there was several funds that were inactive. Um, that hasn't had any activity for a long time, so I went through the motions and closed those funds. They didn't, they don't have any money in or out for over three years. So I want to print off a new. List of all of the funds with balances, like as of September or something, whenever we get to talking about it, October, November, whenever. And just go through them, so you guys know what we've got, where and.
That'd be great.
Balances of stuff, and if you have questions about what this fund is, we can talk about it or find it out or.
So those funds had probably small balances in them?
No, the ones that I closed were zero.
Oh, they were all zero.
But there are some funds that do have little bits of things in them.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That haven't had any money in or out for a while. So we can talk about those and see what they are, or try to find the history of it and.
I like cleaning that stuff up.
Yeah.
Because if it's not being used, it's, it's only a place where somebody gets into the wrong fund, creates a problem. I mean, it's just narrows the field of, of what could be a problem.
Error.
And some of that stuff, so if you weren't watching that fund, you wouldn't really. If money went in accidentally, it's like, nobody's there to, to know that it is an X.
Right. Right. So. Um, we'll, I'll put that together for you guys after.
Appreciate that.
Stuff comes in a little. Not heard. Oh, I just did. He says he thinks maybe a phone call might be better for connection purposes. Not sure if we can make it work on Zoom.
Okay. Did you say a time?
Just afternoon. So. Twelve, ten, total five-ish.
Oh. Okay, I have one. We were supposed to approve. Minutes. And voice. For the share. I say, I kept it in my inbox, right? Yep. So. Um.
Yes, we held the check back.
Yep.
Um, because I wanted your guys' approval to sell the reserve fund.
Yep. So are you comfortable if I make or ask for a motion on that with Alan?
Which one is that?
The one that he emailed us with the, with the Durango.
Oh, yes, I would.
Okay. All right, so. I would look for a motion. Uh, to approve a purchase order in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. For two thousand twenty-three Dodge Durango. Um, to be paid out of the Atchison County Sheriff Reserve. Fund, um, to Alan Samuel's Dodge Chrysler Jeep. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm this.
Okay, it's been moved. I will second it, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Has that been printed?
It has.
Okay.
I put it through for permit, but wanted, cause I think he wanted it.
Okay, well, I'm at P O. Well. There wasn't, you know, it's just that.
I think it's.
Oh, I, but I mean, don't, don't we need to sign?
So I didn't print it out, sorry.
Oh.
Uh, I don't have, I can, I can forward it to Cory and ask him to print it.
Well, maybe it's, if it don't need it, we don't need it. Might just help me normally sign it. Do you need one?
Uh-uh.
Okay, if you want, if.
If you find that satisfied. That is totally fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could it use the senior? Sorry, it's just.
When we get this done, should, and we were talking about publishing the budget, but should we send it to all the department heads also?
Yes.
Good point. We'll, we'll make that part of our motion. Um, to, to have finance director send it to all. Department heads as well as publish on social media and our website. Is that good? Okay, so do we want to recess into? Okay, so do we wanna recess into workshop, just so that the public isn't sitting around for an hour waiting for us to say something? When we're waiting for twelve ten for. Workshop via phone with Alan?
We'll make the motion, we recess into budget workshop and come out at one? Or?
Uh, when we're through. I mean, we'll come out prior to one.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll second that motion. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, recess into workshop.
I won't add too much to it, it's kinda awkward.
Okay, we're, um, in open session. Um, so we're back in open session. We have Commissioner Rebus joining us, uh, bu- by the cell phone. Um, and I think we've kind of dwindled down to where we know what. We're end up with as far as budget numbers. We'll let the finance director kinda recap that for us. Um, and then look forward to our public hearings next week. So, Mark, if you don't mind.
Sure. Do you want, um, ad valorem percentages or dollar amounts or both?
Both would be great.
Okay, so it, we have reduced, um, the budget from the initial, uh, meetings that we had. And it looks like we are at a thirteen point three seven percent ad valorem increase from. Twenty twenty-two ad valorem to twenty twenty-three ad valorem. Um, and that is a one million three hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollar increase. And then keep in mind, those are, um. We have a zero percent increase. From this last budget, we had to keep twenty-two's revenue the same for twenty-three. So now going into twenty-four. We're able to exceed the R and R, and that's where this percentage increase comes from. Um, our current mill rate is fifty-three point three eight four. And our twenty-two mill rate was forty-nine point five nine seven. So that's only a six or seven point six percent increase. So we'll have these numbers, um, at the R and R hearing and the budget hearing next Tuesday.
And you're going to, uh, well, I would look for a motion to allow the finance director. Uh, to provide the budget breakdown information spreadsheet, uh, for the public's viewing. And publish that on our website and social media, and also send a recap of all of that individually to each department head. Um, do I have a motion to approve or second? Sorry, I made the motion.
Okay, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, passes three to zero.
And again, I think we need to, the, for the public that wishes to come to the meeting, it is, uh, next Tuesday. At the ambulance center, um, at, we're gonna start at two, correct?
Yes.
Correct. For the, 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 the public is two.
The meeting and then the hearings at five.
Yeah, oh, the, okay.
Yes.
Don't I have a, I'll just run it wrong. R and R and budget hearings.
One other thing I think it's worth notating, um, is when we allocated our ARCA funding. Um, we had two million for the road and bridge facility improvements. Um, and because of the position that we were in, uh. Faced with last year of having to hit the R and R and trying to do and be mindful of constituents. Um, we are going to utilize, uh, six hundred and sixty-six thousand fifty-eight dollars of that. For one-time road and bridge infrastructure improvements, um, such as culverts. Bridges, roads, whatever Joe's needs list is. Um, but we just felt that is important to continue to show the need, I mean. For the road and bridge facility and a one-time expense, uh, to help offset. Those expenses to help it with our overall tax increase, so. Which is fine, I mean, we could use it however we want. I just like to be. Open and transparent after we allocated two million that I think that six sixty-six will help us and help road and bridge achieve there.
Yeah, when we're faced with a thirty percent increase, you have to change up and. Go with the information you have at that day and intentions are great originally, it'd be fantastic to be able to hold down to that. Full two million or the full amount allocated, but, uh. We'll have to change up and do, go to plan B. Or C or D, whichever, we are on by now.
No, I think it's very.
Very, it was totally unacceptable, we've cut it down to around thirteen now and. It would've been nice last year if the previous commission could've gone, uh, with the Brady Grace had planned for, cause then this year I could've been, I believe, like around eight, great half percent. Uh, in this world of inflation, supply costs and wages, uh, going down by me. Uh, hopefully we won't have to see it step up like this, but, uh, that seemed to be stabilizing a little bit in some parts of the market, but, uh. We've got a ways to go for next year, so. I do think you'll see a lot of improvements county-wide, road, bridge-wise and, uh, we see a lot of the facilities approved, so. We're, uh, getting caught up from all the deferred maintenance and hopefully, uh, we can slow down the, the, the tax increase of following years.
Yes.
Awesome. Well, that feels good to have that wrapped up and give constituents a week to. Look at the info, digest info and be prepared for any questions they have for us. Before next week.
When do you think that'll be posted? Tomorrow?
Probably.
Probably tomorrow, okay.
Alan, did you have anything else or?
Uh, no, I did not. I look forward to seeing, uh, that and look forward to having a public hearing next weekend. We need to take another stab at a few things we still can.
Okay, well, we'll see you at one o'clock next week.
I will be there.
Alright, thanks, Alan. Wanna recess back and then. Until, I mean, we have another half an hour, so not a lot of the. I, this feels good to be done.
So, wouldn't be budget, uh, workshop because we're. That's done, so. Uh, we're just recess into, uh, until one.
I just. It, it just. Or we could just say, if you're watching this meeting, it's, there's not gonna be any more discussion or action, so. You can turn off your device.
But we are physically here, if somebody needs to come. Talk to us or.
Yeah, we'll stay till one, like, we promised, but it's just.
We'll make a motion, we just recess. Until one o'clock when we will pop in to, uh, go out officially.
Okay, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass this to you. Alright, we are back in open session, looking for any public comment. Seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass this two to zero. We are adjourned at one o'clock.